All right, let's call this regular meeting of the City Council and the WPCA order. It is 6:43 PM. For the record, today is Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. We have council members participating in person and via Zoom. In person is Councilwoman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Cavanero, and participating via Zoom, we have Councilman Oliver. That is a quorum of this board, and before we jump into the agenda, could we kindly stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll jump right in. Item number one on the agenda is a motion, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4, Subsection E of the City Council and WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedure. Do I have a motion?
No move.
No move.
Seconded by Mr. Cavanero, while in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public? I see department heads and a reporter. So I'm going to take this opportunity to do an acknowledgement. I believe we have, from our Sullivan Senior Center, our director, Joel Sikorski, and did I see Christine? There she is, Christine Trudeau Brown, on the Zoom call. There they are. So I wanted to present to the Sullivan Senior Center and the individuals that really make this program sail the way that it does, a declaration, "On behalf of the city of Torrington, in recognition and appreciation to the Torrington Nutrition Program for its commitment to serving nutritious and delicious lunches to our seniors here in our community, delivering meals on wheels to our homebound neighbors, and planning special events and parties, all of which enhance and enrich the lives of our older adults on a daily basis. It is through the continued commitment and dedication of the staff, volunteers, and benefactors that enabled the Torrington Nutrition Program to be so successful. You have improved the quality of life and nourished so many through your hard work and programs over the last 50 years. Congratulations on reaching this milestone. Thank you on behalf of a grateful city, and my very best wishes for continued success and prosperity in witness whereof I hereby set my hand and cause to be fixed the great seal of the city of Torrington on this 20th day of February 2024." And I will make it a point to get to the Senior Center so that I can deliver this to both Joel and Christine. And I don't know, Joel or Christine, if you wanted to say a couple of words about the program?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would love the opportunity to say something. We've been working on, you know, the presentation that we'll have, which won't be huge on the 28th with our luncheon, but I was doing a lot of research, and it's evident that the city of Torrington has always supported its elder community members. Looking back as far as the 70s, when this start, when this program started, the city held a special meeting, and there was unanimous outcry that we would support the needs of those seniors after there was a small study done. And I see nothing over my 20 years, my last 20 years, that would be any different, and I thank the council and the mayors directly that I've worked under for supporting our program and understanding the value that it brings to our community.
Thank you, Joel. I saw Christine in and out. Is she shy?
Yeah, sorry, I can't get my camera to work. But I would just like, again, to just, you know, to thank you guys. I'm truly honored to be part of this program. And again, like Joel said, we're extremely grateful for the mayor and the city council's continuous support to the program. Hopefully, we'll have, you know, be able to provide at least another 50 years to our clients and allowing them to stay in their own homes and out of costly nursing homes.
Very well said, both of you. Thank you very much, and I'll come see you, Joel, in the next few days.
One last thing, Mayor. It was at our 40th anniversary, we actually hit 8 million meals served, and Christine did the math today. And we're at 9,724,221 meals as of today. So in the next two years, if you're around, I'll invite you or any of the council members to deliver our 10 millionth meal when we hit that somewhere in about 458 days, I think.
That's incredible. Yes, that would be fun. It's amazing. Great job. Keep up the good work. Thank you both.
I'll email you the pictures from that day later.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Thank you. All right, let's move into item number two. I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from February 5th, 2024.
No move.
Seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments in the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the purchasing agent to enter into a contract for diesel fuel number two, fuel oil and gasoline, if the price is no greater than 10% over the bid price as presented on February 20th, 2024. And I think I have to, do we have a supplemental of what those bids came out this morning? There it is. Got it? Okay. So for diesel fuel, the bid would go to East River Energy of Guilford, Connecticut, in the sum of $2.7097 plus .0072 in fees for the total annual cost of $164,644.14. I think I'll take this in those A, B, and C, if that makes sense to you, Penny. Thank you. So the motion I'm looking for is to authorize a purchasing agent to enter into the contract for diesel fuel to East River Energy, as I read, at 2.7097 plus .0072 in delivery fees. The total annual cost is $164,644.14 with a 10% bid cap over that price. Do I have that motion?
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanero. All right, so a motion is made and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So the second motion I'm looking for is to authorize the purchasing agent to enter into a contract for number two, fuel oil, which would go to Dime Oil Company of Waterbury, Connecticut, for the total sum of, excuse me, for the sum of $2.7871 plus .0092 in taxes at the estimated annual cost of $67,678.46 with a 10% cap over that bid price. Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanero, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the third one, or item 3C, is to authorize the purchasing agent to enter into a contract for gasoline to be awarded to East River Energy of Guilford, Connecticut, in the total of $2.2798 plus .2075 delivery fees, the total estimated cost of $283,540.80, and again, with a 10% cap over that bid price.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Cavanero. Questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Penny. I know this came in at the 11th hour, and we appreciate your time. Do you answer them tonight, or do you do it first thing in the morning? Lock it in? Excellent. Thank you, Penny. Okay, item four, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here in acting as water pollution control authority to authorize a mayor to enter into contract negotiations with Wright Pierce of Middletown, Connecticut, and tie-in bond of Middletown, Connecticut for on-call engineering services, as further explained in the WPCA Administrator's Memo dated February 12th, 2024.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Oh, go ahead.
Just, Mayor, just asking some questions on this. Is there a price limit on any of these contract pricing per event? Or you're asking for an ongoing review and bid process with these firms? How does that work exactly?
Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Ed?
I don't believe there has been a price cap on these projects. They usually propose a fee, and the mayor accepts it or doesn't accept it. It's, so this case, they've been through a pre-approval process that they're accepted by the city. The pricing comes later. We don't normally come to council for every project for engineering services. Let's make a change.
Yeah. Okay, can't some of these events be quite substantial, depending on what you're undertaking? You know, would it be in the hundreds of thousands or even?
I don't think 100,000 would be the correct number for engineering services for any of our projects now.
Okay.
Good. I could forward any proposals of any any agreements that come forward with the City Council would like.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea, quantify how large this is on a rolling calendar year.
Yeah. Biggest, so they're all different sized projects. Biggest one we're looking at now is Harris Drive Pumping Station, but really drove this RFQ process. Right now, it was a requirement because we just received a grant to do that work. I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer for the exact amount of that. I could, I could reach out for that and get a, send an email out.
Yeah, I'm just trying to come to an understanding of what's involved. Are you looking for a quick turnaround time on these, you know, engineering conclusions and get the work done because some might be on emergency bases? Or, you know, can you just paint a scenario of what some of these instances would be? Like at the Harris Pumping Station?
If, can I help, can I help with that?
Sure.
Okay. So these are on-call services for that very reason. There are a number of projects that happen during the year. So what we do is we do this RFQ, and we say, "We are seeking engineers that can be available on-call as needed." And the competitive process is that they submit their proposals, which would include an hourly rate, you know, what they expect their turnaround time would be. These kinds of projects are then specific, if it were specifically looking for the design of renovations or reconstruction or new construction, then what we do is we develop the scope of those services. And because there are two on-call engineers here, we would be soliciting from them what the cost would be for those projects. So this is a process that the state uses, other municipalities use. We have used this for decades, you know, for these on-call services, and they have been so successful with the WPCA that we've more recently started using them for on-call services, such as marketing through the Economic Development Office, and some engineering services in our engineering department when it comes to road reconstruction or large-scale renovation projects. Standard practice.
Okay. And will the City Council still have means to weigh in on the contracting of the bidding process? This is solely only for the engineering firm selection?
Correct. This is only for the selection of the engineering. The projects, as you know, it has been before the WPCA in the past. If there's a reconstruction project, it's in the capital plan. It's budgeted within the capital plan, so this council approves it on multiple levels. Approves it in a budget cycle, approves the award of the contract. So absolutely, there's standard operating procedure in making sure that not only does the council and the public know what projects are happening, but which firm would be using to provide those services.
Thank you.
Any sizable projects would have to go out to bid.
Okay.
Right.
Outside of what we, what lower projects that would, we have on-call contractors right now. We use for some smaller projects, they don't come. But I do, I do solicit proposals from anybody that answers me on that on-call list.
Yeah, my question, on the floor. My question, as always, has to do with the change orders. Because, again, you know, City Council does have an obligation, right? With fiscal responsibility and oversight of such projects. So I'm a little confused about the wording here of change orders. Are these change, so if the council, if you come forward with a proposal or with a budget, you know, a vendor and a budget, does that mean that if there is a, for X dollars, X number of $100,000, if there's a change order, that the change order, that change order then does not have to be approved by the council? The mayor, we cede the right for the mayor to approve that change order? If it's then in excess of that original contract? First paragraph.
In the letter.
"The general service agreements and all future task orders, including contract administrations, related items such as approval of change orders and payment invoices." This is saying that we cede to the mayor. There's nothing to do with this particular mayor at all. I just want to be very clear on that, okay? This has to do with any mayor, any mayor, even if it were a Democrat mayor, just the city council.
Okay, oh.
As a right, as an obligation, not a right, we have an obligation to oversee the, you know, dispersment of city funds. So as that reads, is that a scenario where a contract could get approved, but if there is then a change order, which, you know, as we know how change orders work, could be significant, does that then bypass the council and reside only with the one person, the mayor?
I would venture to say it hasn't happened, at least to the best of my recollection, that we've had any change orders that significantly changed the price or the scope of the work. You know, change orders about a particular product or something that may, you know, be provided faster in a supply chain that doesn't significantly impact the budget. I think those are day-to-day operations, you know, that can happen.
When we did the upgrade project on the plant, there was change orders weekly.
I'm aware, I'm aware.
Yeah, certainly, we didn't come back and forth to City Council over that. But as you know, we came under budget. I could foresee, say, we're running a pipeline, we run into some ledge. That could significantly, it could be $20,000 change order. There will not be time to come to a council meeting to get, to continue that work out in the middle of the road. That could happen. A building job like a pumping station, perhaps, that could, 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 if you, if you guys are looking to get approval for all change orders, I could see a building job, but you understand what I'm saying about a, like a emergency sewer line.
Yes, I do. I understand that, I understand that. I'm not sure if, I'm not sure there is a way to, I don't want to put a dollar value. I mean, typically, the council is obligated, anything over $10,000.
That is correct.
We have to do. There wouldn't be time. These are, these are typically emergency.
If it's an emergency, it's an emergency. I see it as a health and safety to the public in many cases.
But I would also add that we have, in those situations where an emergency would have an impact on the price or scope of the work, we have called emergency meetings of the council to get approval of that. These projects, you know, when you bring in an engineer that does the design, then that design work becomes part of the bid specs. And those bid specs result in a number of bidders, and those contracts, bidders, the selection of the bidder for the construction of the project comes before this board. So all along, particularly the WPCA, you are included in all of those decisions. It's just these on-call services where, you know, we're looking for somebody who can design a workaround, you know, around this particular piece of ledge, or, you know, we've got this improvement that needs to be made at the WPCA, and we're looking for somebody to design that element. The actual contract for the construction must come before this board and be approved.
The other benefit to having these on-call engineers firms, Wright Pierce has been with us for a long time.
I know that.
And they're out there looking for funding for us. I mean, this congressional grant that we have for Harris Drive, that, we want to, we want to have that if it wasn't for having them as an on-call engineered firm. That's just another benefit. That was a $1.6 million grant.
Yeah, I understand that, I do. I just am trying to build in some controls for the council to be able to look at this at the end of the process and say, "Yeah, that was necessary, 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 necessary."
And, again, just to clear, we're talking about the engineering services, not construction. The construction is the costly part of everything.
I do it, okay, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine as well, and I will do this.
Aye.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So I don't know, is that something that we'd want to talk about in the future?
No, just as long as there's a clear understanding that, you know, I mean, obviously, as past practice, every construction project, you know, the engineer helps design it, it then goes out to bid contractors, construction contractors bid on it. Those must come before this board before any construction occurs.
Yep.
So that's the difference in, even, you know, a really heavily designed project, like the whole renovation of the $70 million, exactly, WPCA, that was a more expensive. We certainly wouldn't use an on-call engineering firm for that. We certainly would be coming to the board to say, "This is what we're looking. We're looking for, you know, a highly qualified engineer firm that does this work specifically." And there'd be a bigger dialogue. But these, you know, these little fixes to the system or, you know, a pump station within a neighborhood, that's the reason you do these on-call services. They're available on a moment's notice. They're not high-priced items. But if it requires construction, those bid specs are used to solicit those bids. So we're good.
Okay.
Great, yes, you're good.
All right. All right, so the motion was made by Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah. I want to thank Ed Tousie again for, you know, just clarifying those points, and it's always an education. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving into item five. On the recommendation of the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Contractor Selection Committee, I'm looking for a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract agreement including all future task orders for the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan to VN Engineers, Inc. of North Haven, Connecticut, as further explained in our Assistant City Planner's Memo dated February 20th, 2024.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. And I don't, is Nate, he's not on the call, questions?
Is there anything specific we're looking at in this grant process in terms of intersections or, you know, any specific roads to focus on?
So I, I can't answer whether there are specific roads, but in general, what do we know? That our traffic systems have changed radically in the last 10 years. Modern technology with signalization that can identify when there's a pedestrian standing on the corner or when the traffic queued up is queuing up too long of a period of time before the light changes. So this study, I think, is going to identify, number one, where are those areas where there's a safety concern? You know, I think all of us that live here in the city of Torrington and have lived here for a very long time, we probably know which intersections those are. So they'll, they'll do this study. I know in the past, I've engaged in some of the routing studies, and they physically walk the area, they time the area, and there's more of a global approach as to how you're going to change and upgrade your transportation systems. I can tell you that while the grant is a modest amount of $200,000 with a $50,000 match from the city, it can help us leverage up to $30 million to actually do some of the work that we expect will happen here. It's a really good study.
Yeah. A question again, and it's the same language. Why in this particular case does the written proposal want the council to cede approval of change orders and payment invoices, again, to the mayor only? Again, seemingly bypassing the City Council.
So, again, what you're approving is a $200,000, a $250,000 contract. The mayor can't change the scope of that contract. The contract is, you know, we're going to negotiate it. The scope of the contract is what it is. We're limited to $250,000. So any change orders may be, you know, we did the signalization study. We earmarked $50,000 for that. The study came in at $40,000. You know, we can redeploy that $10,000 to, you know, some pedestrian study. Those are the types of change orders that would happen in a contract like this, but certainly not a large-scale, you know, we're going to focus on just the intersections on Main Street, and then, you know, the mayor, or there's some other authority that decides, "Yeah, we're not going to look at those intersections. We're going to go somewhere else."
What if, what if it's the reverse scenario where it's going to cost the city more money?
It can't.
Can't?
No.
Okay.
It's a grant. We can't spend more than we're awarded, and our match at $50,000 is embedded in the budget. You cannot spend more than that.
You and I have had a discussion about change orders in the past. I think I've told you my very amusing story about how I first learned about change orders.
Then the board of ed?
Yeah, allow me two minutes to describe it.
Go ahead.
I was working at ESPN, the main transmission area. I was on the Board of Education. I got a call. It was very, very busy in that environment. I'm at a road desk, road monitors, looking at a whole bunch of stuff in front of me while my engineer, my streaming engineer is doing it. Everybody's busy, busy, busy. I get a phone call, phone calls from somebody here, a city call. This is when I was chairman of the Board of Education, and it has to do with a change order, okay? And I was very upset about the cost. It was going to cost us more money. And I said something in this environment, in ESPN, and I slammed the phone down. Business. A very young engineer that I know was a very smart guy that we have very little, he said, "Change orders, huh?" This is sitting in front of me. I said, "Yeah, yeah." I said, "Do you know anything about them?" And he's a very young guy. He goes, "Oh, do I know about change orders?" He said, "My father was a very large contractor in Delaware." He said, "I'll tell you everything you need to know about, about change orders." I said, "I've got a picture that my dad showed me when I asked him about it when I was in high school." So he goes walking all the way down in front of the room, comes back with a picture. The picture is of a, the picture is of a, what do you call, of a dock, of a of a, you know, a um, boats in in this beautiful harbor somewhere in Delaware, okay? And from behind, there's this beautiful, beautiful large yacht tied to the yacht, there's a little skiff, okay? On the back of the skiff, the title of the skiff was Original Contract, and in big gold letters on a huge yacht was Change Orders. And he said, this is all you need to know. So I I've always kept that in mind, and I ask these questions as a responsible member of the City Council of Torrington. That's it. So we can move on.
Um, I, you know, I think when I think of the very large projects uh that are occurring in the city or have occurred, we talk about the water treatment facility. Um, we talk about our our animal control facility. That was another one, you know, change orders were happening, but we were stuck with the price, we were stuck with, we were stuck with the contract that we had signed.
Yes.
So those change orders must come with some value engineering. Um, the high school, I'm sure there are change orders in that high school construction on a weekly basis. Yeah.
Yeah, I I would, I would.
So I'm sensitive to what you're saying, and of course, um, if there were any need to increase the scope of the services, um, that, of course, is a a change order that would, could only happen if this council were to approve it. So it would come to us. Correct.
That's why I asked the question.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure thing. Other questions on the Safe Streets and Roads for All?
Is there a timeframe for the study?
So I know that um in the you know what, in the contract negotiations, they'll and we'll go over what the um, what the timeline and the deliverables are. This, by the way, is a public process. So I would fully expect that the council members, our Planning and Zoning Commission, our Board of Finance members would want to participate in this, um, because the deliverables um include how many public hearings or public informational sessions were held. Um, and uh, the end report obviously comes back to the council. But I I'm not sure. Usually, these are something that you do in a short time, like a six to twelve months.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions before I call the motion?
Uh, we we had just had the Engineering Department uh exhibit plans for the Midgen Avenue um, street rehabilitation. And is it, I suspect that's too far along to like go back and have the scope reviewed for any kind of safety concerns on this grant project? Or uh, i- is there when does this grant take effect and what kinds of things can be included uh to possibly catch that?
So timing is always um a sensitive issue. We're getting ready to go out to bid for the um Midgen Avenue project. Um, but what we anticipate coming forward through this uh transportation study is um specific to those safety measures. So where are your crosswalks? How well are they lit? How well are they, you know, where are they ADA compliant with the slip guard stuff? Um, all of those can certainly um be incorporated even after the reconstruction of Midgen Avenue occurs, you know, that is a take it down to the, you know, the base, um, and build a new road with the trails. Um, I think that the one thing our um at city engineers and our um land use um city planner and assistant city planner are very good at is jointly looking at those plans and looking at them through the lens of uh public safety, pedestrian safety, um, you know, uh, multi-use um roads. So I fully expect that this study will be informed, help us make informed decisions on reconstruction projects, but I think on a higher level, it's going to be about those other investments. Signalization, you know, um, signalization that would also be um an assist to anybody who's hearing impaired. Um, you know, and then, of course, all of those other ADA pieces. That, I think, is really what's gonna come out of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Final call for questions on this. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I will entertain a motion to accept Conservation Commission's annual report for twenty twenty three.
Some more.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Any questions or comments on the report? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for the month of January twenty twenty four.
Some more.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed by Corporation Council's memo dated February twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Some more.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Uh, questions or comments on this report? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on a list dated February twentieth, twenty twenty four. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer usage funds and refunds indicated on a list dated February twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Some more.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
The Councilman Iveyne. Uh, questions or comments on the um memo or sewer use refunds? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, I'll entertain a mission, a motion to consider business by department heads.
Some more.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded, Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're anticipating my request. Uh, let's see, who do we have? Um, anything um for, anything further, Joel, this evening?
He's on mute.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, City Clerk's Office. Okay. We'll move into twelve. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
Some more.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll start with Councilman Iveyne. Anything this evening?
No, I do not.
Okay. Miss, uh, Councilwoman Spino.
Um, my only comment, I read the Conservation Commission report, which was great and really thorough. Um, economic development, do they usually do something similar, an annual review or report to the council?
So they haven't, and um as the council is aware, our uh Economic Development Director um is now working for the COG, um although she's in a weekly meeting with uh me and other municipal leaders um on the development of a comprehensive uh economic development strategy for the entire region. Um, we are posting her position, and once that new Economic Development Director is seated, then we'll be able to get back into economic development meetings, and I would highly recommend that the council receive those um more than annual reports, I think quarterly. Uh, as you recall, RISTA was attempting to do quarterly reports. Um, and there's so much information to share, so I I really do think quarterly is the best way to go with this.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It's a great question. Councilman Kevin Arrow. And Councilman Oliver.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Um, the only thing that I will share with the council um this evening is uh we are about to embark on um the next round of bonding and borrowing. Uh, it is four million dollars for road work. This is all on the two thousand eighteen referendum where the voters and taxpayers of the city of Torrington agreed that they wanted to um embark on forty million dollars worth of road improvements. Uh, and the balance of that bonding um is for the high school construction, um, and that's a combination of bonding and bond anticipation notes uh for uh short-term borrowing uh to ensure cash flow for the monthly bills that are coming in. Uh, the bond rating call was on Friday afternoon. Uh, our new comptroller, John Monks, our new budget manager, Erica Johnson, myself uh and Dan Farley participated in the call. We think it went very well. I believe we will have a response from the bond rating company tomorrow morning as to uh what their recommendation is with regard to um where our bond rating uh will fall. Uh, that is um all in anticipation of the bond sales, which will be happening next week, first week in March. Uh, Yankee Pedlar in for anybody who is um sitting on the edge of their seat, as I am all the time on that um project. Uh, we did attend the hearing with Judge Pickard on February sixth. The um defendants in the action, Jason Hospitality's, uh, were directed to bring in a an unconditional commitment for financing uh on February sixth. What they did bring to the court was a term sheet uh from Hanover uh that did um spell out the terms for two uh lending or financing um applications. The first one was for the Small Business Administration loan in the amount of five million, and the second was, I think, one point six million dollars for conventional financing. The term sheet uh is the precursor to uh application and due diligence that the um bank would be exercising in its researching um the viability of the lending or the loan. So uh we really wanted the judge to look at this through the lens of what he originally ordered, which was an unconditional commitment. Um, Judge Pickard did feel very strongly that it was um promising with Hanover Bank that the term sheet appeared. I know, I'm watching Councilman Oliver shake his head, no.
Sorry.
So I
Worth the paper it's written on.
I, you know, and that's, that's how we went into that hearing, you know, that that was our um position, that this was not the commitment. Uh, Judge Pickard wanted to give them the um opportunity to pursue this. Uh, so uh we ended up with a hundred and twenty days extension. Uh, and uh because the judge was leaning heavily towards approving that, we said we would only go into that um extension or stipulation as long as we had thirty day updates, you know, where are they with the appraisal? Where are they with the phase one um uh environmental assessment work? Where are they in the um, you know, the background um checks? So that's what we ended up with, a hundred and twenty days. The first thirty days is up on March. I think it's March fourth. The one hundred and twenty days is up on June fifth. And uh I can assure you that on June fifth, if we don't have uh a firm commitment, that we will certainly be appealing to the judge that time's up.
Mayor?
Just where are they in their proposal right now for the use of that building? Is it as a hotel?
It is. Correct. It is as a hotel. In fact, the strength of their presentation to the judge was um that they have this um agreement with Hampton Inns. Um, now, as we know, that's a franchise, and what you do is you pay for that franchise, you pay uh for the use of their name to fly the flagship, you know, you get access to their um, their hospitality bookings and, you know, some of the uh rewards. So that is not, because everywhere I go, people say, well, I understand it's being built as a Hampton Inn. No, it is still owned by uh Jason Hospitality's. It will still be run by uh Jamson, um, which is the um hotel branch of the family. Um, but they just are paying to fly the flagship. Now, with that, with that commitment to fly that flagship is a punch list of things that Hampton requires their hotels to provide. You know, breakfast, you know, there are certain requirements on that. There are certain expectations on uh the quality of the finishes, you know, whether it's the, you know, the carpeting or the um trim or, you know, so there are, there's a a punch list of what Hampton Inns expects. It's Hilton, but Hampton is, I think, the, yes.
They they can demonstrate over the years, there's various conversations. They can, I mean, clearly in the fall, I forgot what they call it, you know, the people come look for the leads, there's a name for that.
Leaf peepers.
Leaf peepers, yeah, and in the summer, but the soft period really is, right, it's post-Christmas into the summer. What what are they, um, how do they project there being a need for a a usage need for for that hotel?
I am so glad you asked that question. So one of the things that uh this council may recall, um, back in the spring of last year, we came for um the council's blessings on contracting with um Placer AI. This was, you don't remember that? So it's uh Placer AI is the name of the company, and what they do is they track people who are visiting, uh, shopping, um, passing through. So they're able to track the behavior or the patterns of the people that are here, and they can present that information to us in um a a number of ways that we can use to attract further tourism or retail opportunities or recreational opportunities. So um we got a report recently specific to what kind of traffic was generated at Christmas Village during Christmas time, where we saw that there were, I believe it was eighteen thousand visitors that happened during that period of time. They also indicated the hotel use during that time. And um they indicate that all of the hotel rooms that were available in the city of Torrington were full.
This is again through Christmas, through December.
Right. So that's because we asked for that specific time relative to that, those specific two weeks. So this AI, this Placer AI data, we can say, show us the use of the hotels, or who's staying in a hotel out of the city of Torrington, coming into Torrington and then going back to the hotel. If they're staying in Litchfield, driving to Torrington to see a show, then driving back to Litchfield, they can actually track all that. It's one of the reasons we wanted that data, to see, you know, where are they staying? Where are they visiting? How long do they stay?
Um, in that soft spot, what 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 usage are they showing for that soft spot? Uh, February to May?
We, I can ask that question. We can certainly have that.
Those, they must, they've gotta be invested.
They have their own, yes, they use their own. I off, I offered that service also to the new owners of the um Plaza, the Downtown Plaza.
Yeah.
I think we all call it the TJ Maxx Plaza. Um, but they already have their own um Placer AI technology that they use. So I believe that the Patel's do also. Um, so when you ask, is it gonna be developed as a hotel, I certainly think that utilizing the data that we've paid for, you know, that we can rely on because it was designed to suit our needs, you know, that we can certainly advocate for what we think that really should be, and I would say right now, it should be a hotel.
Yeah, okay. Cause I remember, I don't wanna name names, but you know, somebody you you knew well from high school was interested in putting some money into doing it, and I know his um, his concern was was that that donut hole in 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 the schedule and couldn't figure out a way how to get through that. So I guess they must know something. Something.
I I think that um so, I, all those years of saying, you know, going back twenty years, our decisions should be data-driven. You know, does the data support this investment, or does the data support um these changes in programs? You know, does the data support this investment or does the data support these changes in programs? This Placer AI, I think, is really compelling information to be able to share with a potential developer. I see Councilman Oliver's hand is up.
Hello, everybody. What's that?
I was gonna say, don't do cartwheels over that term sheet, please.
No, 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 I won't, but I just, with my background in banking and finance, I just, there's, I have to say that it's very pie in the sky that they're going to get $11 million on a property that's not, there's, it's, it will never cash flow. There is no way it can cash flow at almost $87,000 a month principal and interest payments. It's just, there's no way. I've looked at the Yankee Petler in the past. I can't tell you what it's about now, obviously, but I know that it has no revenue. So I don't know how it's going to service $87,000 a month in debt service covenants. It's, I don't think it's ever done that. Anywhere remotely close to that. It would never work or get approved based on what I've known in the past to be regular operating numbers. So I'll just leave it at that. I, I think the judge was very kind, not to us, but to to the other party here. When I look at $11 million of financing at seven and a half percent, there's just no way that place, if it were filled every night of the room, every night of the year and didn't have any vacancies whatsoever, it, it's never performed that way. So in my mind, they might as, might as well, I mean, they must have a incredible global cash service on the rest of their, on the rest of their company, because the rest of their company will be holding that note and paying it for probably up to five years before that thing actually has positive cash flow, let alone positive cash flow enough to be able to service $87,000 a month in debt service payments. It's just, it's ludicrous. So that's just, I, I hate to be the person that level sets on just numbers, but I don't, I don't know how that works there. Because the bank would be insecure, they wouldn't have a loan, that building won't appraise for $11 million, so the bank, the banks making the, the loan would be insecure by far. By far, by far. Four or 500% under collateralized. So I don't understand how that moves forward in any financing situation with any bank. It would have to be a shadow bank, meaning a hedge fund type of non-bank financial institution lender that puts that kind of money up. And there's no way they're going to get a market rate for that. They won't get seven and a half percent. You know, you're talking more like eight, nine, 10, 11%, which makes debt service go up even more. So I don't know how any of that works in the judge's eyes or in the court's eyes, because the numbers don't work. They just don't. So I'll get off my soapbox on that little analysis, but.
When I saw you shaking your head, I suspected you had some insight. So I, and I, I know that over the years, or many years of having these conversations.
$250,000, just the SBA fee.
Yeah. I, you know, when we talk about even the number of hotel rooms, you know, all of the information that we were learning as we kept dancing them up to this line where we ended up then pursuing them in the judicial system. You know, was that the tipping point is at least 80 rooms, you know, this is a hotel with 62 rooms, you know, and granted, there may be five commercial spaces that can help offset, you know, that revenue stream, to your point. Is that going to bring in 87, $87,000?
No, no, it won't. So I mean, I don't know, I just feel like.
Yeah, I, as I said, I can certainly keep my fingers crossed and say my novinas, but I fully expect that we will be back before the judge on June 5th.
Absolutely. I, I can't imagine a bank that would swim up to that, given the fact that property is now blighted. And its reputation has been more than tarnished, it's been destroyed. So in its heyday, it was not capable of these numbers with a good reputation. So that's why I'm really concerned about where we are right now with it.
Yes, I agree.
I just, yeah, just for your consideration, council consideration, trot out one of my golden oldie ideas from a couple of years ago, which, what, what was an earlier discussion about, you know, possible uses for that place, which have to do with our mutual acquaintance, Michelangelo, who suggested this to me years ago. Remember his idea about a tournament, about, about long-term, Torrington making a long-term commitment to try to turn, build tournament fields in Torrington? Because he was, I mean, he runs, he is a broadcast center guy for Disney's wide role to sports facility, which is what they do. And he said, you know, there's just such a huge shortage, right, of tournament space. He said, we're getting people from, from, from all over New England, he said, we're getting people from Maine, they can't find places. Women's field hockey, soccer, all of those things that require big fields, not, not stadiums, not, not ice hockey. But he said, things that Torrington could conceivably put together. And he said, those things that my daughter, your, your, your son, I believe, played at least one of them, right? Did a lot of regional sports. You know how much income that generates when those families move in for three days, four days at a time. So, and spring being a, you know, optimal time for doing this kind of thing. I don't know where we begin the process. I mean, somehow we go to our booster clubs, the people who know, who are doing this already with their regional teams, putting them on buses or cheap plane fares and flying them expensively. How much is there a need for that? I don't know who, who could look into that and see, you know, is there that need? And then how does Torrington start, put, put something on a roadmap to, to taking advantage of it?
So when you first started talking about that was right when that American Rescue Plan money was coming into play for us.
Put some of that toward that.
You did, yeah. So, you know, we talked about $50,000 for feasibility study on expansion of some of our recreational facilities. And then I brought to the council and to the board of finance a request to utilize $25,000 from our funds to purchase the 11-acre parcel on Main Street, North Main Street, off of Red Mountain Avenue. Absolutely, you know, that is an area that, you know, the, right, the trail goes through a part of that, you know. Is this now an opportunity to expand that and include some of that tournament space or an expansion of those recreational facilities? I'll tell you, there's a, a club, it's a soccer club, that have been knocking on every door of a large enough facility to do an indoor soccer facility. So I do agree with you. I think that there is a demand for that. I do believe that Torrington can provide that. And I do hope that, you know, as we move forward with not only the feasibility study, but also identifying where are those little, you know, more than 10-acre tracts of land that we can think about for those purposes. Also with that, we did pursue the BAR grant, that Brownfield area-wide revitalization grant. It was a $200,000 award that we got from DECD to look at the Brunswick property. Because I almost think you mentioned the Brunswick property when you were talking about this.
Yes.
So we've put some of those first steps in place. That Brunswick BAR grant is another public. I would expect that you and, you know, the general public that has an interest in seeing some of these indoor facilities slash outdoor facilities come to fruition for us.
Yeah, well.
And now that hotel does make sense. Maybe that's a tipping point.
Yeah.
Or that 100-unit campground that's going up off of Route 4, you know, now.
Is that somehow Bobby Calabrese?
No, the 100-unit camp, campsite, campgrounds?
Off of Clug Road, Clug Hill?
Off of, yeah, off of Clug Hill.
Yeah.
It's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I agree with you, and we certainly took that information when we were talking about, what do we do with all this ARPA money? You know, always starts with a study. I, I'm, it took me a number of years to realize it takes, it starts with a study. I like to jump right to the end and buy the land and build the thing, but we're, we're planting those seeds with the study money.
Yeah, no, no, it requires, it requires lots of, there's a tremendous amount of logistic, you know, follow-up that, that has to occur, but we are on Route 8, we are good, and, and, and it could absolutely be a, a, a real, you know, revenue generator for the city that's ongoing, you know. And in a very healthy way, in a very family-friendly way.
Yes. All right.
Continued again.
Did I hit up everybody for comments for the go-to-the?
Yes, you did.
Okay, good. Then I have to open, I'll move into the next agenda items. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for comments on agenda items only.
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this podium is so big, I can't see. Is there anyone behind there I should recognize? Okay, good. And I'm moving into item 14, there being no further business before the board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, David.